Get everybody's attention real quick. Okay. If everybody go ahead and have a seat, we'll go ahead and get started right quick. My name is Alan Gilbert. I am chairman of the committee working on recommendations for the city council on the elected versus the appointed chief of police. And so I want to thank you all for being here tonight. It's a good turnout. I really appreciate everybody being here tonight. We have JJ and myself are here tonight to answer any questions. We've got our city staff back there that's here to help us with any questions that we may have. And we want to encourage every one of you to ask questions. We want to encourage you to make comments. We want to know what your opinions are, and we want to make sure that we inform you as much as we possibly can about the difference between elected and appointed when it comes to the chief of police in the city of San Angelo. Now, we'll ask you one thing. If you do want to ask a question or make a comment, please come to the mic right here so that everybody can hear you and so that we can get all this gathered up. So let me tell you a little bit about how this came about. I can't tell you every aspect of that, but the committee, we were asked and appointed by the city council to look at the appointed versus elected chief of police in San Angelo. There are seven members on this committee that have been appointed. Mark Lack, David Howard, Candy Poole, Billy DeWitt, Jeff Curry, and JJ Graham. And we also had David Howard from the San Angelo Police Department set in with us on the committee also. So these are the members that we have that are on the committee. We met. I want to tell you that when we first met, none of us really had thoughts and ideals exactly how this was going to go because we know that this is a very emotional thing that we're dealing with when you talk about the elected versus the appointed chief. We went to the city council and talked with them about some things a while back, but that was after a long research and long study from the committee. Some of the people that came into the committee, no, everyone that came in the committee, had kind of a preference of which way they wanted to go. Now, I know you're looking at the revised purpose of the, right now, but I'm kind of stepping off because I just want to tell you how this all come about with the committee. When we all came in, we all had opinions one way or the other. We started doing the research. We started talking to a lot of different people, and JJ's going to cover that here in just a few minutes. And then we started looking at everything. And one thing I will tell you about this committee is that we all agreed that we would come up with a recommendation that we believe is based upon all the facts and everything that we have found and everything that we have heard, and not just our opinions. Because we want what the citizens of San Angelo want, but we want what is best for the city of San Angelo, the citizens of San Angelo and the San Angelo Police Department. Some people will like what we have to say when we make our recommendations, some people won't. But I did serve 44 years on the bench, and it seemed like every time I was in the courtroom, I made 50% of the people mad and 50% of the people happy. So I tell people all the time, my only thing about that was, I just didn't care which half I made mad and which half I made happy. And that's kind of the way we have to look at it from the committee. So this committee has taken this very, very seriously. In my 44 years, I've served on a lot of committees, but I've never served on the committee that I think was as much into what they were doing as this committee. They felt very strongly about it. So, you know, I don't want anybody to say, "We all just went in there and talked." Believe me, we didn't go in there and talk. We met for about five or six weeks, two hours twice a week, and then we had homework. And everybody did their homework. So we spent probably individually about 12 hours to 15 hours a week per person working on this. This is how dedicated they were. And I want you to know that as citizens, because this has been the best group of people I've ever worked with on a committee. And I want you to know how hard they worked to try to come up with the right decisions. Now, we went in and made a recommendation, or talked to the city council and asked for more time. Because what we discovered was, we were talking about putting this on the election the other day, and I think a lot of people would have liked to have had it on there, but we weren't ready. And we were not going to make a half-baked, you heard what I was going to say there, did you? A half-baked recommendation to the council. Because we wanted to make a recommendation that we believe has an opportunity to go forward. And so we asked for additional time. So we will now go back to the city council in January. The committee will meet again in December. We will then vote to decide what we think we need to recommend. Whatever we make our decision on at that time, then we will have time to work with the city staff, the city attorney and the city staff, so that they can then come up with the proper written documents the city council will need. There's several, there's three options that we have. You've been handed, I hope everybody got a ballot or a poll, whatever you want to call it tonight. There's basically three options on there. And those three options are to leave it just like it is, to go to, to go to an elected position with changes in the qualifications, and then there is for the appointed position. So when we get through tonight, we're going to ask you to please turn those in. And we will try to answer every question that you have tonight. As the committee, we looked at everything that, that dealt with the chief of police. We looked at section 60 through 64 of the city charter. We looked at the Texas Local Government Code 143 Civil Service statute. We looked at the meet and confer statutes. We looked at the San Angelo Civil Service regulations. Now, just so people will know, what are we talking about here? Well, the city charter itself, section 60 through 64, that tells us qualifications of the chief, they run for four, for four years is the term, things like this, and that's in the city charter. Because there is no provision in state law for an elected chief of police in the state of Texas. That comes through the charter by individual cities with home rule that allows them to be able to do this. The civil service, civil service was adopted, what did we decide, 1960 something, Teresa? Civil service is adopted in 1960. That's the civil service that you hear the police department and the fire department works under that regulates how they do certain things. Discipline of employees, things like this goes through civil service. And that's civil service which was adopted in 1960. Civil service has regulations and requirements, but only for an appointed chief. Civil service does not have a provision for an elected chief as far as minimum requirements or anything of this nature. If I remember correctly, and you can correct me, Teresa, there was one sentence in civil service that said, "Unless elected."
That's correct. That's as far as it's.
I think that's, that was the only provision in there that spoke to elected chief of police. Now, I say that, and then we looked at the meet and confer statutes, which is where the police department has their association, that they then deal with the city, and the chief is basically not part of that discussion. That's done between the police department and the city of San Angelo. So those are the things that we looked at, and we wanted to make sure we, we had an opportunity to understand because at 44 years in municipal court, probably the closest person to the police department without being in the police department, some of this I didn't really understand because I never had a real reason to really look into it. And I learned a lot of different things about this. People ask the question of, well, we've been told we're the only city in the state of Texas with an elected chief of police. As far as we can find, that is correct. We have not found, there were Brownwood, and was it Comanche, I believe, Coleman, those were the last three. Now, I remember back in the 70s, there were quite a few cities that had elected chief of police. But through the years, those have all gone to the wayside, and now the city of San Angelo, as far as we know, is the only city that has an elected chief of police. Now, one thing about it, and one thing I told the committee the very first day, and JJ, I think, will stand behind me, is I told them, "You're going to think I'm crazy, but I want you to understand this. I'm going to argue both sides." Because I can argue both sides. There's good with this, there's bad with this. Back and forth, back and forth. And so it's really hard sometimes to look at it, but you have to get down to the brass tacks to be able to understand exactly what the differences are. Now, what are some of the differences between appointed and elected? And I know, JJ, I'm going way off scope here. But I think y'all have already read most of this. This has been in San Angelo Live and on TV, and I think you've already read and heard a lot of this. You know, what are the differences? Well, of course, one is, is elected. And I don't think I have a slide for where I'm going. I've never been really good with slides. You know, the elected position is elected by the city of San Angelo. What are the requirements? The requirements for elected chief of police in the city of San Angelo is you have to be 18 years of age, you have to reside in the city of San Angelo for two years, and get elected. That's the requirements. Now, we've got some police officers in the room. Is it true that you have to be 21 to be a police officer now? Okay. So you have to be 21 to be a police officer? So I got a question. So if I get elected and I'm 18, I'm still the chief of police, but I can't be a police officer? Correct? Okay. So I don't know where we go with that part. Can that happen? Sure it can happen. I mean, the city of San Angelo in 1974 probably lost their mind because they elected a guy that was 21 years old to be on the city council who had no earthly idea what he was doing. And I know that for a fact, because that was me. And so it can happen. Now, realistically, we do, we think, but it could happen. So we just need to fix that part. That part just needs to be fixed. You have to be a resident here for two years, but if you're not 21, you, you can't become a certified police officer. But at 21, you can become a certified police officer. And so, but if, if my understanding is correct, you have like one year after becoming the chief of police to obtain your certification as a police officer. Okay? So one thing we looked at was, right now, and I keep looking at these guys, by these officers, I've known them for years back here, and they're just waiting for me to make a mistake, I know. One thing you look at is, is it true that it's harder to become and higher qualifications to become a rookie police officer on the police department than it is to be the chief of police? That's a true statement, correct officers? That's a true statement. So we have to look at fixing that, okay? We have to look at fixing that. Don't ask me where we're going, JJ, because I don't know. Okay. So we have to look at that. You know, what, what do those qualifications need to be? Well, we do know one thing, and if you go back to civil service, civil service has minimum qualifications for the chief of police. There are minimum qualifications. And I'll try to find those for you. I'm going to let you, I'm going to let you take over here in just a minute, and we'll go from there. But there are minimum requirements that are set forth in civil service. So we need to look at that. How do we make that applicable? Two, if we stay with the elected situation. What else do we need to look at that may be in section 60 through 64 that needs to be changed also? If we go to the appointed, what happens there? Okay? Civil service then dictates how this happens. It tells us, one, the qualifications, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Teresa, but I believe one of the main qualifications was you had to have a master's from TECO to be the chief of police under TECO, under civil service requirements. And then there's some other requirements, which we're going to show them all to you here in just a minute. Remember, I'm going off the top of my head here.
You actually have to be an intermediate level?
Intermediate? Okay.
Yes, and have served as a bona fide law enforcement officer for at least five years.
Okay. But we can change that to a master's if we want to.
Absolutely.
We can go up, but we can't go down if we use those qualifications.
Even if it was appointed, we could add additional qualifications.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So how does the appointment happen? This has been one of the biggest questions. We don't want the city appointing through this area. Well, the appointment can occur, has to occur with the recommendation being made from the city manager to the city council. Okay? Now, one thing we have discovered, Ms. James found this out for us, that, and we all talked about this, if that was to be a recommendation, now, remember, I keep using these words "if" because I'm not telling you, we don't know, we haven't voted, I don't know what we're going to do. If we were to recommend appointed, we could also require, and I'm saying "we," we don't do anything. City council does it, we're just making the recommendation. We could make a recommendation that the city council require upon a vote by the public that there be a committee. And this committee, let's say, for example, could be made up of five people that is there to work with the city manager and making, coming up with and making the recommendation to the city council. And we could even make a recommendation to the city council that two members of that five-member committee have to be San Angelo police officers and appointed by the city council. That gives representation. That's one of the things we, we could look at. Then the city manager makes the recommendation to the city council. Now you have the city manager with the committee making a recommendation, the committee's appointed by the city council, making a recommendation to the city council, and the city council has to vote on that person. Now we have your elected representatives making the final decision upon who is your chief of police. Because some people say, "Well, I don't want just the city manager making that decision." Under civil service, that's not how it is. That recommendation's made, and then the city council makes that decision. What's, what's other differences between civil service, appointed, and elected? Well, let's see. Let's say there was an issue with the chief of police. Civil service gives you things that the city can do to discipline the chief of police. If there's an issue with the chief of police, the elected system, there is no provision for disciplinary action for the chief of police. The only way you can remove the chief of police, elected, is you have to do a recall petition. Somebody has to come out, get the petition, put their face here, go out and get, what's the percent? Is it 7%?
30.
30% on the petition. And all these signatures have to be out, they have to go out and gather and bring them in and do this. So if something happened now, it's going to take us 90 days to get that petition. Then we, the city has to call an election, and then you as taxpayers have to pay for the election to determine whether to or not to recall the chief of police. Okay? That's the difference in the two. Civil service provides for disciplinary actions and removal. Elected only provides for recall. Okay? I'm, I hope I'm doing this, I'm trying to balance this out for everybody so that you understand the whole thing. Because one of the things I got comments today, I'm here to get informed. We haven't been quite this informative all the way through, but I, excuse me, Teresa, we, I want to lay it all out. You're gracious enough to be here, we're going to lay it on the table. I think that's what we have to do. So those are the differences that we're looking at. Is there a term? There's a four-year term for chief. Remember, it used to be two years. Boy, that was something. I think these guys, they're not going to shake their head, but I think they would tell you, the first year the new chief came in, he was learning his job. The second year he was here, he was, he was, he was out campaigning to get the job back the next year. And we've had, let me tell you, we've had some exceptional, good chief of police. We've had some really good chiefs of police. We really have. I think, I might have to go count, but I think I've either been through 11 or 12 chief of police at my time at the court. And we've had some really good chiefs of police. Really good ones. Now, there's one thing I want to tell you. When I used the word "master" a while ago, and I think I may have got confused on that with the appoint, with the appointed versus elected, according to the information we received from the police department, there are 63 people, if I remember correctly, Teresa, that we were told would meet the qualifications as the chief of police under the civil service requirements if we went to a master's. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I recall, somewhere in the 60s.
Yes. I believe it was 63. So that tells us that we have many officers at the San Angelo Police Department that are qualified to do this job. We have a lot of them there that are qualified to do this job, or at least on paper. Okay? So people say, "Well, you know, we don't want you going out of town," and that's not our job, that's the city council and the city manager if it's appointed. But I'm, I'm going to let JJ here in a minute continue from this point forward, because I want him to explain some more of the things to you that we looked at. But I wanted to lay this out to you tonight. Is, is there any questions right now at this point?
Did you go over the last maybe three or four police chiefs?
Joe, could, Joe, could you come up to the mic, please?
Sorry, I didn't mean to break your call.
That's all right.
Hi, I'm Joe Hyde. Can you go over the last three or four police chiefs and what their qualifications were at the time they were elected? So what, what kind of certificates do they hold? What kind of, were they, did they go to college? I mean, I don't know, what, what were the qualifications they had?
Okay, Joe, thank you for that question. Joe, I have to tell you this, I can't answer that question. I don't, I don't have that. I'm not going to try to tell you something that's not there. I don't know that answer, but one, two, and I think, Teresa, we were told that three of the last four would have met the minimum requirements under civil service. I believe that's correct. But for that answer, I would have to get them, the city, to give us that information. I don't have that information. Yes, ma'am?
Anna Bartosz. Have we ever elected an 18-year-old? That seems to be the biggest problem in all of this, the qualification. Have we ever elected an 18-year-old?
No, we haven't. We never have elected an 18-year-old. Yes, ma'am?
Two questions.
Okay.
The search committee, if they make a recommendation to the city manager as to which one they think is most qualified, is that binding upon the city manager?
That would be up to the city council how they wanted to word that.
Okay. And then for, to recall an elected chief, 30% of which election?
It would be 30% of the people voting in the last mayoral election.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, sir?
R.A. Cantrell, resident of San Angelo. I don't think that any of the qualifications you suggested are sufficient reason to not have the chief of police be directly accountable to the people. Furthermore, I think that the city manager should be in an elected position and fully accountable to the people.
Okay.
And does anyone here believe that this commission will recommend no changes? Does anyone in the room believe that's what's going to happen?
No.
Thank you.
Steve Hampton. And it occurred to me while you were talking that, what are the qualifications for sheriff? That's the next higher level, so it's elected office, so what would that be generally?
Then that is a provision under state law. That is not anything to do locally. That is a provision under state law. And basically, it's just going to, it's, I have to look at that to give you the exact wording of that. Teresa, do you know that answer?
I'm thinking Google says it.
I know we looked at that, but I honestly can't remember exactly what that answer was.
Well, Google says, "U.S. citizen, resident of Texas for 12 consecutive months, resident of the county for at least six consecutive months, registered to vote in the county at least 18 years of age, not have been finally convicted of a felony from which they have not been pardoned or otherwise released, and not have been determined by a court with probate jurisdiction to be totally mentally incapacitated or partially mentally incapacitated without the right to vote." So it's, that's basically what we have is the police chief.
I'm sorry?
That's basically the same as our qualifications for police chief.
Right, right. So, and that's a provision under state law. Yes, ma'am?
Ginger Moran, I worked with civil service for 33 years, and I'm telling you, I wrote a person up for a whole year and could not, they let her resign. So I don't have a lot of competence in civil service either.
Okay, thank you. You know, yes, sir?
My name's David Hooper.
Yes, sir.
What are the minimum qualifications for chiefs in cities of our size?
We've been looking at some of those qualifications, they're different in every city. I don't remember how many of them we looked at, but most of them have a qualification similar to a master's through TECO and a certain number of years. But if you have the master's through TECO, and I'm going to get this wrong, by the time you get to that point of getting that, you, you have to have been a police officer for 12 or so years, eight years, 10 years, to get to that point. Some of them have requirements that you must have been a supervisor for at least three different departments within the department, things of that nature. Every city can make their own requirements, as long as they meet the minimum standards under civil service if they've adopted that. Yes, sir?
Could you clarify for them what you mean by masters? It's not a, it's not a master's from college.
It's not a master, yeah. Yeah, Les' question was, make sure we qualify masters. That's not a master's from college.
All right. That's, that's what I wanted to.
You want to explain to them what the masters is, Les?
If a masters is just through all your TECO training and some college training or college education combined, but it is not the equivalent of a master's, like a doctorate in college or your master's in business administration. It's not, there's no comparison between those, actually.
Right. I, I, thanks for telling me that, because I know we went through the separation of it, but I forgot to tell you, that's different than that. It's through the Texas Law Enforcement Commission. But it takes a lot to get the masters. So do you have, do you have a master's, Les?
No, I have a bachelor's.
Okay.
I have the master's certification.
That's what I want. Johnny, do you have one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we have two sitting right there that would meet those minimum requirements on paper. So, all right. JJ, I'm sorry that I changed this up on you. I want you to take it from here and, and kind of give them some more ideals and thoughts, and we'll, we'll entertain some more questions.
Well, thank you again for coming out. Appreciate it. The more, the better. More input we get, the better. And that's our objective, is to get feedback from the community. So I appreciate you guys taking the time and interest to be out here tonight. Oh, gosh. First, I'm going to look at how we came across some of our ideas, how we got some feedback. We talked to some elected and appointed officials associated with San Angelo in particular to get their feedback and what their thoughts were on this process. Frank Carter, the current chief of police, who was the elected chief of police, was a great source of information. Brian Dunn, the former appointed San Angelo chief of the fire department, was also interviewed, as was Ed Kading, who was formerly employed here, it was, I believe he was a lieutenant in the SAPD, and they became the appointed chief of the Brownwood Police Department. If I'm not mistaken, he was actually considered running here at one time or another, but for whatever reason, he didn't get elected or didn't follow through, I'm not sure. But they gave us a lot of good feedback and insight on that, on the difference. One of the things we were really worried about was, especially with, with Mr. Kading, was, well, how was it treated? How did you feel as opposed to, from an elected position and then being appointed as a police chief? And they gave us a lot of good feedback on that. And I can't think of a better source than the people who've been through the system already. And I'm, specifically what they said, but they kind of went in the lines of what we're looking at here. They have different opinions about different things. They have different opinions about different things, but I think they were all pretty much concerned over the qualifications, what it took to become the chief of police, whether it's here, Brownwood, or anyplace else. A lot of us, over this time since July, had a lot of informal conversations with people we worked with, neighbors, friends, uh, people in the street would just strike up conversations. And a lot of common themes emerged. And I think a lot of these common themes might be voiced right here tonight, if I'm not mistaken. Um, not again. Here we go again. Okay, I'm a beloved resident of San Angelo. I'm, I'm afraid I wasn't born and raised here. I apologize for that. But as the saying goes, I wasn't born here, but I got here as quick as I could. Uh, came here with the military. When I retired, I came back here. This is a great place to live, so I'm learning a lot about the city by going through this charter. But I know, uh, I really care about this city, so if I can help out in some way, I wanna be able to do that. I don't remember being on ballots, excuse me, I was stationed here in the eighties and nineties. I voted every election. That's what I do. Uh, I don't specifically remember it myself. I know it's been on the ballot a few times, appointed or elected. I don't think that's enough. It's not just a plain appointed or elected. There's a lot more to it than just appointed or elected. And we're hoping to get that information out to you folks. Uh, widespread distrust in the city government. We got a lot of feedback on that. Well, I can't trust the city council to do something, or I can't trust the city manager to make the good appointment. Um, it's a buddy system, the good old boys, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of self-interest. They wanna appoint somebody, you're gonna do their bidding. You know, like their chief police puppet is what one person used as their puppet for the chief of police. Uh, an elected chief is free to do what he wants, how he wants, whatever he wants, and only answers to the voters. They definitely answer to the voters, but I'm afraid they cannot do whatever they want, how they want, and whatever it is they wanna do. That's, they can't do that. And the city wants to control the police budget. Well, once again, in a sense, this budget's already controlled by the city. We're allotted X amount of dollars a year, and it's divvied up. It's the police chief's job to hopefully get that money and use it wisely. If they need more, they can campaign for more, obviously, but that's not up to the, to the police chief to determine that. The city already determines the budget, so that's, that shouldn't be a big surprise. God, I'm not good with these things either, okay? See, I'm based, I have my students do the slides for me, so I'm not used to doing the menial task of changing the slides, so. Some other reactions we get from people, or especially when we told them what the qualifications were, a lot of people were really shocked about it. Uh, some of my neighbors, I, I got a good little neighborhood. All these people grew up in San Angelo, they lived here all their entire lives, and to a person, they were, you gotta be kidding me, when I told them what the qualifications were to be chief of police. Everybody pretty much assumed, well, it has to be a police officer, right? You have to have X amount of years' experience as a police officer, don't you? Or certain qualifications as a police officer, right? Nope, nope. Uh, I remember we were talking to one gentleman on the city council, was talking, hey, my daughter graduates high school in April. I'm throwing her hat in the ring. She's gonna be our first eighteen-year-old female chief of police. And it could happen, you never know. But a lot of people were very, uh, shocked a little bit, maybe some dis- some disbelief on what the qualifications were to become a chief of police. Lack of knowledge about the chief's duties, how they're, uh, they're regulated by federal, state, and local statutes. The chief of police just doesn't have open range to do whatever he or she determines needs to be done. There's certain guidance, regulations, and there's a structure in there. There's a format they have to follow. So using a lot of these comments and, and, uh, input that we got from citizens, here's pretty much what we came up with. Uh, for an elected chief of police, requirements do not include any prior police experience. Like somebody, like Judge pointed earlier, you can be an eighteen-year-old in charge of his department, you're not even qualified to be a police officer. What is that all about? Okay? Reminds me a little about in the military, the enlisted guys and officers. Officers are in charge. They don't always know what's going on, but they're in charge. There's some exceptions to that, don't get me wrong. Okay, I already see somebody getting all baffled up back there, so. The chief of police due to civil statutes and meet and confer does not have exclusive control over the department and its employees. Okay, a lot of people think chief of police can do pretty much what they want. Okay, that's not necessarily the case. Elected chiefs, well, we found that some people feel that it divides the department during the election period. Uh, if I declare, he declares, somebody else declares, then are little clusters. I'm supporting this guy, I'm supporting that guy. All while also hedging your bets because I'm supporting him, but if he wins, I don't really wanna irritate him that much. If he's gonna be the chief, I'm still gonna be here, be employed by that person. So, there's a lot of division that could be, uh, that can come within the department on something like this. And as we mentioned too, an elected chief, legally a city employee, they're exempt from discipline, uh, in violation of rules and policies. So, there's a lot of legal stuff with that. For the appointed chief of police, uh, Texas Civil Service statute defines the minimum requirements for an appointed chief of police. And as we said already, uh, these are minimum statutes, minimum requirements. We can add to these, we can't detract from them, but we can certainly add to them to customize, I guess, for the city of San Angelo. The SAPD chief due to civil statutes and meet and confer does not have exclusive control over the department's employees. Once again, he or she cannot just do whatever he or she determines they wanna do with the, with the police department. And while the police department may not be divided in ranks for an election, they may very well be united in their disdain for the, uh, selected or appointed chief, particularly if it's coming from outside the area. That was one thing, uh, Ms. Kading pointed out, that when he first got there, there was really no opposition, but since he was an outsider, some of the more, you know, the more experienced people had a look at him like, what's this guy gonna do? So it wasn't open rebellion, but he could tell there was a little bit of minimal resistance, so they got to know him a little bit better and feel him out a little bit, which is only natural. Okay, we kinda did a compare and contrast here for the committee research findings for the elected chief and the appointed chief. For the elected chief, you need to be two years of San Angelo residency eligible to vote. In other words, a US citizen, eighteen-year-old, not a felon, not mentally incapacitated, as one of my neighbors said, and you have a pulse. Uh, that's the big thing right there. So that's your minimum qualifications for an elected chief. For an appointed chief, as it sits right now, five years as a licensed police officer and a TECO intermediate cer- cer- certification, certification. So you have to have some police experience. For elected chief, uh, governed by civil service, appointed chief governed by civil service. For the elected, possibility of the department being divided during the election process. And for the appointed chief, the department may not be divided, but they may be united against an appointed chief if for whatever reason they don't see that as a good thing for the police department. Bless you. So what do we recommend? We recommend to the city council that we get more time to do some town halls and get some feedback from everybody, cuz we had a lot of conversations, spent a lot of time talking over the months. But to get people in a room like this, this is where the feedback really comes out. The people are really concerned, they're gonna be here, and they're gonna make their, their opinions known. So we recommended, we put it off until January twenty-twenty-three, we make our recommendation to the committee, uh, to the committee, to the city council, and then from there, it's, it's up to them. We're only making a recommendation. We don't dictate anything. We make a recommendation to the city council. They can say, thank you very much, we're gonna do that. Thank you very much for your time, we're going this way. Okay, all we can do is make a recommendation based on what we found out. Uh, we work with local media, the city staff, participate in several interviews. I know Chief and Billy DeWitt have done some, uh, the television, the city, city San Angelo TV. Uh, there's been spots on, uh, I guess the news, it's been the news, KSL, KLSD, and things like that, right? Uh, Facebook, I don't do Facebook, I apologize. But I know we get a lot of feedback on Facebook, things like that. Um, we're doing the best we can to reach out, get the word out for people that are interested to come back and give us their input. We're doing two town halls, including this evening sessions. Uh, maybe we could do one more if we have to, I don't know. But we wanna get illicit feedback from the public for, to put together a final recommendation, cuz this isn't our decision. We're getting feedback from the people, we're gonna gather it up, and we're gonna take it from there. Okay? We also added a few more slides into this presentation. That was normally it, but now we have a few more things we're gonna throw out there. We did a ballot with the police department, a secret ballot or a closed ballot, however you wanna call it. Uh, just get some input from the police officers. We had eighty-five responses. Thirty-seven of them recommended no change, keep it as is, no change. No change, right, as is, right now. Twenty-nine said elected with qualifications, enhance the qualifications. Okay, make it more of a quali- make the qualification a little bit more stringent than by the eighteen-years-old. And nineteen said appointed with qualifications. So, a lot of opinions there, okay? That's within the police department itself. From the public, and I'm guessing it's mostly Facebook, I'm guessing, right? From the Facebook stuff we're getting and all that, which I don't look at, but they gave us all the input. Uh, nine people, which represents about sixteen, we spent, sixteen percent of respondents, said elected, no change, keep it as it is. Okay? Thirty-nine responses, or approximately seventy percent of those participating, said, keep it elected, but with qualifications. And appointed with qualifications is about fourteen percent right there. Uh, so elected with qualifications was the, the dominant response. Along with that, though, I did see a lot of questions, well, who's gonna make the qualifications? What are the qualifications? Now, Judge touched on that a little bit. We looked at a lot, a lot of different cities in, in the area, what their qualifications were. Obviously, we, TECO has a lot to do with that, the qualifications. We're looking at either intermediate or master certification as a police officer, experience as a police officer, could be in the military, could be in civil service, could be whatever. There's a lot of different things we can look at to come up with a final recommendation. So, and it wouldn't be just a off-the-cuff type of thing. They'd do some research on that and come up with something good that the citizens would support. I.e., that's why we're doing this, getting input from you. If you guys think it's, need to be more than eighteen-years-old and a resident of San Angelo, this is your time to let us know, so we can act on that. And I, I watched last, the last town hall last night. It's how bored it was last night, but there's nothing on television. So I watched the SATV, and I watched our session last, last month. Carolyn McEnroe gave that, uh, interview. That's on, that's on television also. And there's a website with a survey form on it, and there's a website address right there. So there's opportunities out there for you guys to participate and to get your friends and neighbors to participate. Again, our goal here is to get an informed voter out of this. If you're making a decision, God bless you. I did thirty years in the military to support that, right? Okay, I, I support that. Go ahead and vote. That's why we're here. So I don't, it doesn't matter to me, appointed, elected, whatever. The biggest finding I get out of this is the qualifications or a lack thereof. That's what really hit me. Now, determine that, that's another game, but I, that's what really got my attention. And we're looking for you folks for feedback. Any questions? Sir, how you doing, buddy? Yes, sir, real old friends, yeah.
Uh, my name is Dr. Gary Jenkins. I'm a retired federal agent and former police officer in Arizona, currently, uh, volunteer chaplain with San Angelo PD. First of all, I'm appalled at the minimum qualifications for a police officer. People that are putting their lives on the line, there is a maturity factor that has to fall in place. And I'm in favor of a, an elected police chief with higher qualifications. And we got some people sitting in this room right now that meet those qualifications. And I would support our police officers to the best of my ability. But the current system we have now, uh, is not acceptable in my sight. Uh, and also, uh, the, the fact that, uh, if a police chief is appointed, uh, I believe that leaves just too much room for insider politics.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Sir?
Ryan Hernandez, uh, I'm, I'm Lucy, I think, uh, single member District Four. Sorry. Um, I didn't really wanna do this, um, but I have, uh, masters in public administration. I care about the city. I, um, was born and raised here. My dad is a bivocational minister, taught at Lakeview. Um, and so, it's just kind of, I have been fortunate through the generosity of others like Charles Anderson and Florence on Christian School to, uh, have a, a Christian education. Um, and, uh, I generally lean right to the side of politics, so I apologize to my friends from the left. But, uh, I was able to go to a really good university, a really good, um, MPA program at UNT, um, which, full disclaimer, is helmed by, uh, when I took a class with who is somebody who is the head of the Strategic Government Resources, which is the, um, the firm that was used to recruit the last city manager, who has been a personal mentor to mine. Um, when, um, my pride and humility has gone too big, and I've seen myself as something bigger than I am. Um, so he's a personal friend, so first of all. Um, and those, um, school books, we are kinda seen as, not necessarily a joke, but we're the largest city the size of, um, the side, in, in Texas, without, um, I guess, an appointed chief or an elected official, or something like that. So, I'm, first of all, I'm grateful that all of you guys are here. I think it's really cool, um, that you guys are doing this. Um, I, you know, have had higher aspirations sometimes, um, but I've, I've made mistakes. I think, uh, some of you guys probably know who I am. Um, and like Moses struck the rock, and that, uh, it, water came out.
There you go.
Um, but he wasn't allowed into the, the promised land. And so, my contribution to this is simply this, that I think that I was last year in San Angelo full-time in two thousand thirteen. I remember whenever, um, I guess, the time before, uh, Daniel Valenzuela. So I, I, that's my only point. It has grown, I mean, it has gotten better. There are insider prop, prop, uh, politics, but it is a better city than it was fifteen years ago. We've had somebody from the north side be a mayor, which I have never thought of.
There you go.
Um, we've gotten, um, Latino representation on, on city council. And, um, I think if we, if, if an appointed chief cannot succeed on a charter, then let's both some, raise qualifications, let's try to get somewhere where we can recruit promising candidates, no matter the age, and, and set guidelines and set, okay, so we're gonna have somebody from, um, single, every single member district, uh, people who throw their hat in the arena, that have the right, that they can, um, you know, get on the committee, do leadership in Angelo, learn about it, and be invested in it, or else you don't get to complain. So, that's kind of my, uh, again, and I, I appreciate all of you guys, uh, uh, to my friends who are probably watching this, who are left-leaning, I apologize, so.
I appreciate it, sir, thank you. Thank you very much. Sir?
I believe you said that the chief of police can only be removed by a recall election, is that correct?
Elected chief.
There's also a judicial process you can go through to have an elected official removed as well.
Yeah, if the chief of police commits a felony crime, he can't continue in office, can he?
TECO can take his license away?
If he goes to prison, he can't be in the police office.
Once he's convicted, yes.
Yeah, that's why I said convicted of a felony crime.
Yes.
That pretty directly removes him, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
That directly removes him, doesn't it? I mean, he's gone. You don't have to have a recall election once he's...
No, TECO would take the license away, but that could take a year.
From the time he's convicted or from the time he's charged?
From the time he's charged to the time he's convicted. I'm sorry, I forgot.
From the time he's charged to the time he's convicted, yes.
Wait a minute, that's kind of confusing. From the time he's convicted, let's just talk about that.
Okay.
How long does it take to remove him from office if he's been convicted of a felony crime?
My understanding is TECO would take the license right then. Is that correct, gentlemen? Yes.
So, a re- a recall is not the only way?
No, there's, there's different ways to do that, but our charter calls, the only provision we have in our charter is the recall provisions.
Okay, so if he's not a criminal, and he's elected by the people and responsible to the people?
Right.
The only way that he can be removed is if a committee or a commission comes up with... The only way that he can be removed is if a committee or a commission comes up with the idea of a recall. Do the people directly have anything to do with the recall?
Yes, sir.
Other than to vote on it once you propose it?
They would vote, they have, the people are the ones that have to bring the recall petition.
Who, who proposes the recall petition?
The people, somebody has to.
Registered voter, sir, can do that.
And, any registered voter can?
Yes, any registered, any, any registered voter.
What's the process? Who do you go to to?
Oh.
I'm sorry. Julie, would you answer that for us?
Maybe she's not ready to answer that for us.
We had a recall petition one time, or something, I remember. I can't remember what it was.
For different terms of office, so I'm just trying to find the exact language for you.
Yes, sir. Come on up, please.
Yeah, the question was rhetorical, by the way.
Well, I understand, yes, sir.
I got you, we understand.
So, I think to clarify a couple of things, when we talk about T-CO, that's the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. There are the states regulating, when it comes to law enforcement. Um, if a peace officer is arrested in the state, they have to self-report to the commission that they have been arrested. So, a suspension license is possible, and I think to your point, if somebody is arrested for a felony, T-CO will suspend that license upon reporting, because that peace officer has to report, and the department has to report to the commission. That way, there is no drawback.
Right.
So, I think that clarifies things. And it, and it doesn't matter if you're elected or not, you still have to be a commissioned peace officer. T-CO regulates licenses, just like our current chief. He has to get forty hours of continuing education every two years.
Right.
Just like the new, the new people that start our academy. And I think that's what the confusion is, is when we talk about qualifications, the chief of police is a city employee, realistically. He's also a commissioned peace officer, and in addition to that, he still has to meet those similar requirements. So, employment, peace officer licensure and education, and then, of course, the elected chief is, the citizen or his boss realistically, so.
Right, thank you for clarifying that.
Can you tell me the, uh, requirements are to be T-CO certified at the minimum?
I'm sorry, everyone at home, wherever the camera is. Can you tell me what the minimum T-CO requirement is to be just a patrol officer right out of, right out of school? And then what the requirements are to be this master T-CO officer? What's the difference? And, and how fast can you get it?
So, there are, I, I, I can't quote both of those things. I cannot quote both of those things off the top of my head. Um, however, you've gotta be at least twenty-one years old, just like Judge Gilbert said. Good moral character, and then, of course, fit certain guides on, within the department to be hired. The certification levels, however, those vary. So, um, the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement website has charts. There's four levels of licensure. There's basic, intermediate, advanced, and master. Master is the top out, at least, um, within this licensure program, it's based on several different factors. Years of service, in addition to academic education, law enforcement education, as well as now military service. So, all of these things can contribute to a higher number of hours. It can also contribute to your overall education within the law enforcement profession. Um, as far as specifics, Mr. Hyde, I can't, um, give those to you. Um, however, the majority of the officers within the San Angelo Police Department are working their way toward that master certification, because it's education-based, and that's what is important in our, in our profession.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
For your master's certification, it's gonna vary depending on the person, and how often you get to go to training. After you've gone through your intermediate, all the, all that stuff through, your master's. So, for myself, if you have a bachelor's degree, uh, once I got through the advanced, all I had to do is wait on my ninth year. Once I got that, I had my master's certification, and that's what they bachelor's degrees, so that helps speed that up. So, you can get it as early as nine years.
Okay, that, I think that's what we're looking at, right? What's the minimum?
But you could get it earlier, I, I think it, I'm not sure you can get it much sooner than that, based on, you have to wait so, for a certain amount of time.
Sure.
If memory serves me correctly, that I think the chief and David told us the average time was somewhere close to twelve years for a lot of people to get that.
Yeah, I think that's what Dave was saying, yeah.
So, any other comments?
Well, I'll say, looking at what's on T-CO's website, the quickest you could do it is five years, but that's if you have eight years of military service training credit or a doctorate JD. So, I'd like to point out, the lawyers can be police officers or master.
That's still, that's still basically twelve years' experience.
Yeah.
Steve Hampton again. I, uh, I was up here and asked about the sheriff, and you said that the requirements for sheriff were very simple, much like the chief of police.
Right.
And that, uh, that's good enough for the state. And so, um, I, I don't see why the local city needs to have, um, you know, master's degrees and, or P-CO and, uh, and et cetera. Also, you mentioned, uh, the civil service, which you were, you were not clear about it. Uh, as you, you mentioned for correction, um, you know, if there was a problem, but there have been no problems. Uh, we have not had a problem at all, uh, and this has come up several times. I mean, we had a, we had a, we had one that was, well, found guilty, uh, after he was, after he was out, uh, so, so, you know, it's not impossible. But, uh, I don't see that, um, what I see this as is a consolidation of power, uh, which is not needed, uh, it, they're, they're trying to shoot it down a channel to the control of the city council. The city council is a, a go-along-to-get-along group, and, uh, so, uh, it leaves it to the, the mayor, uh, and, uh, what, what is desired there. Uh, the control seems to be more of a problem in a time where we're arguing about whether we can have weapons or anything, uh, for self-defense and, and, um, and, and the paranoia that, uh, is around is prevalent at this time. I don't see why we need to make such, uh, changes. So, uh, and as far as the appointment of the board, I don't even agree with the appointment of all of those people. Uh, I know nothing about them. Uh, they may have a philosophy completely different than myself, uh, and it sounds like they might. So, uh, I think you need to have more public meetings. I think the word is, is slow in getting out. Not everybody reads Joe, and, uh, and, 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 uh, and so, and it's, uh, his group and the, the newspaper has gone the way of all the earth, so, um, uh, I think you need more time. It, it took more time on other topics.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
No, I'm all for that, yeah.
Let me, uh, excuse, come on up, sir. Why he's addressing this, because one of the big concerns seems to be about, you know, do we have to do anything? The only thing, and this is, I would, I'll be perfectly honest with you. I haven't decided yet how I'm gonna vote to make a recommendation. And I don't think part of the committee has made that decision in their own mind, because I can still argue both sides of the case. I've always, for forty years, I've been in favor of an elected chief of police. And, uh, but I'm also gonna look at both sides, because there's some things I like on one side, there's some things I like on the other side. And I'm gonna look at that, and then I'm gonna have to make a decision. But there is one thing, I think, and I will find it very hard for anybody really to argue about this, and, and lady, you brought up a good point a while ago, have we ever elected an eighteen-year-old? We haven't, but let's say we did. So, here's my point. Why not fix it so it can't happen? Because if we had an eighteen-year-old, he can be, he or she can be the police chief, but they can't be a police officer, and we don't need that to happen. So, why don't we fix things that we know are wrong? Okay, why don't we fix things we know are wrong? Uh, you know, just because we've been doing it since nineteen fifty-something doesn't make it right.
Nineteen forty-seven.
Nineteen forty-seven. That was before I was born, so I'm not sure, I, I didn't know about that, so. But the point is, we need, ma'am, it doesn't, doesn't make it wrong either, except for we do know it's wrong, because they can't be a certified police officer. So, we know that part's wrong. That's, well, I know, but that's, that's, that's not our rules, that's T-CO's rules, and we have nothing to say about that. So, so we need to fix what we need to fix. We've got a lot of things in our city ordinances and stuff, and, and we're not the committee to look at that, but, but there's a lot of things that have to be changed through the year, because other rules and other regulations change. And if we keep letting our ordinances just fall behind and our charter fall behind, then we get into a foolish situation. And that's what that would be, would be a foolish situation. And, and I'm, I'm from San Angelo, and I'm hard-headed, just like the rest of y'all. But I don't like it when we get beat, when we get made to look like a fool, because we do stupid things. And not changing that, in my opinion, and that's my opinion, not this committee's opinion, is that we have to fix the things that we know are wrong. Because I think we're all smart enough to understand that. So, you know, those little things we gotta look at. I'm sorry? That, that doesn't have anything to do with it, because it is wrong, we know that by the law. Go ahead. Harry Thomas, it's tough to keep your mouth shut when you've, uh, went through this about seven years ago. I was on the Charter Review Committee before I was a councilman. One of the other things I would encourage this committee to do is make sure that we, if we stay with the elected police chief, that we align the elected police chief with districts one, three, and five elections. Right now, the police chief election is off-years, which costs the taxpayers about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars every time we have one. So, as we're looking at this, one of the things we need to do, change the eighteen to twenty-one, then we need to get that aligned back the way it was when it was two-year terms, because that's the way it was when it was two-year terms. Align with one, three, and five, two, four, and six, and the mayor on one cycle, one, three, and five, or on the other, police chief should align with one, three, and five.
Say, Gary?
That's good, yeah.
Okay, any of you? Yes, sir.
Poor guy.
Well, I'm Charles Anderson, most people don't know me, that's okay. Uh, when I was four years old, um, my dad had the radio shop down in the basement of this building. And he was the first and only radio officer that the police department's ever had. He handmade the first two-way radios that San Angelo had, and we were the second city in Texas with two-way radios in our police cars. Okay, seeing all that, when I was four years old, we had a, a water main break in the basement, and it filled up about four feet high, and my dad was down there trying to save all the radio gear and, and the parking meters, because that was his main job. And I was in a five-gallon bucket paddling around in the basement of the city hall. Well, I got to run with the cops, because the police department was right upstairs from where we were, and, and, you know, I was, I was treated pretty nice by the cops. Didn't know that much about, much of anything. Um, my great-grandfather, um, was a Texas Ranger, joined the Frontier Battalion in eighteen seventy-four, and up to that point, we hadn't had any other police officers. My son is a police officer here now. Uh, he's almost, he's getting close to retirement, and I'm thankful that he's here, because all the grandkids are here. Makes the wife very happy. Back in two thousand four, and I'm gonna go quick, there was a situation where the then-chief had an officer under house arrest, because the house, the officer warned a, a, a convicted killer that had been pardoned, that he was gonna keep an eye on him, because that killer had killed his, his brother in the park, and it wasn't gang-related. Well, our chief felt that because an attorney approached him, because of this threat that he was gonna keep an eye on him, put the man under house arrest. And the only time he was under house arrest was during the daytime, because he was also a contractor. And so, basically, that had two detectives watching this guy, and then they leave at dark, knowing that he couldn't work on houses, and he was trying to starve him out. Well, this caused the officers to go over the line and take a stand. And they all went down and sat on the curb at the police department, and they asked for citizens to come help. Well, my wife and I were the only two citizens that showed up to sit down there. This forced the chief to reconsider, made all kinds of promises. Eventually, the officer regained stated, every officer that sat on the curb down there, uh, came under CID investigation, because they had wronged the chief by, by saying something. We got involved in that election, and the police officers of that day and time looked at my wife and I as trying to help them, and they brought us inside the blue line. And for the first time, we were inside there to see how the blue line operated, how the police officers stood together, and how sometimes that they would take up for a guy that did wrong, because he was a fellow officer and he might have your back the next time he came in through the door. We were fortunate enough to get rid of that guy and got somebody else. But the guy we got shouldn't have been there to start with, because when he was in high school, he was dealing drugs. He couldn't be a cop, so his dad got him a job as a dispatcher. And then another chief got him a job as a patrolman, and he was there, he was there. And he was running for chief. Well, uh, the officers laughed at him. They thought it was funny that, that this guy was running for chief, because they knew what his background was. And I warned them, I said, "Look, I got a degree in government. This guy could be the next senator from the state of Texas, he's that good." And they were awestruck when he, when he won, there was only four officers backing him. But then, fast forward four years later, he got into trouble with the, with the Texas Rangers and all that stuff. And Sergeant Sean Palmer was brought in here from San Antonio, because he was known as a guy that could put people in jail for political wrongdoing. In fact, in San Antonio, he put twelve elected officials from San Antonio in the state pen. The Rangers brought him here to clean up San Angelo. Ranger Palmer went in there, did the investigation, got everything lined up. They had stuff going every which way. But what he wasn't con, what he wasn't counting on is San Angelo had a dirty little secret. And that dirty little secret was that there were five people running this whole town. Those five people were responsible for getting our chief of police elected, our, um, district attorneys elected. And they could run it any way they wanted to. Well, Palmer found out about it, he wrote up what's called the famous Texas Ranger Report. I can't remember, three hundred and eighty-nine, four hundred pages, or whatever else like that. And all the officers said, "You gotta read this report, you gotta read this report, gotta read this report." So, I'm not reading this report, I'm, I'm through with this stuff, I'm not getting involved with it again. Well, it wouldn't have done any good for me to read it or not, because you, law enforcement officers, know the way you write a report up is completely backwards from what a civilian would expect to read a book. Where the novel begins is the last thing that happens, the last page is the first thing that happens. But we were able to reconstruct it, and we found out who the five people were, who was dirty in our town. The police department is only one little tip of an iceberg, one little piece of, of the total pie. Palmer went on to become a major, was in charge of McAllen in that area down there, and got in trouble, because he said that there were counties in Texas that were dirtier than that McAllen area was. How many of y'all ever heard of John A. Cough? Nobody, yes?
Hey, Charlie, Charlie, I'm, I'm gonna ask you.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll cork it off right, right here. Here's a solution. Back in two thousand and eight, a group of officers sat down, came about. Your five-member committee, why can't you have three cops on the committee, elected by their peers? Or four cops on the committee? Because the cops know what they need! The city manager. The city manager doesn't know what they need, the cops do. And then, when they make the selection, bring in a retired ranger or a retired DPS investigator and do a background check on it so they know all the guy's dirty laundry. He doesn't get elected to become the president of the chief of police of Texas if they know what the background, hey, if he can fool all the chiefs of police in Texas, what's about a common citizen? All right, your answer is, change it up to allow the cops to be on the committee, and then do an investigation so that whoever is recommended is what we need. That's it.
Thank you, Charlie, appreciate it. And we'll, we'll make, we'll look at your recommendation of upping the number of police officers. Yes, sir?
My name's John Berio, and, uh, uh, it is my opinion that we do not need an appointed police chief who could then be weaponized against opponents to the whims of the city manager, such as was recently demonstrated by attempted actions against me in exposing corruption at City Hall, and one or more members of the city council, uh, participated in this. Uh, my point being that under the city manager, uh, the police chief could, if appointed, be threatened with his future employment if he did not bow to the whims of an individual who may very well, uh, be tempted to be corrupted. Uh, by having an elected, uh, police chief, uh, whose qualifications, uh, of course, being eighteen years of age is absolutely foolish. Uh, but to have them adequately trained and the mentions of the T. Cole certifications and such are, are very good suggestions. But the point is, uh, recent experiences with the City of San Angelo Development Corporation show that, uh, there's a power grab going on. And I would like to ask, who initiated this entire consideration for a, a change in the ordinance? Was it the city manager, was it the city council, or was it an individual or multiple individuals on the city council?
Well, the only thing I can tell you is the city council as a whole appointed this committee, so that's the only answer I could give you for that.
Okay. Uh, the total picture, and this is just one facet of a large gem called San Angelo, uh, when you look at all of the facets that make the, the light of San Angelo shine, so to speak, is that there are certain parties that don't just want control, they want totalitarian control. Now, can you just imagine what would happen had those same powers that bore down on me, fortunately, that item was pulled from the city council agenda recently, but if those same powers could also control the actions of the police department? Would I have people following me all over town? Honestly, I did. People followed me from, uh, the, uh, for, uh, twenty-under-forty banquet that was held shortly after all that debacle with Costa D.C. started. I cannot tell you if it's, okay, I cannot tell you who it was, but someone was weaponizing the machine that is San Angelo against me. And I don't want that to be, to be able to happen again.
We'll look at, we'll think of your consideration. Anybody else? You have another comment, sir?
Yes, sir, I know that we'll all sleep easier knowing that you're gonna make sure we don't get an eighteen-year-old police chief.
Well, good, I'm glad to hear that, I appreciate that.
Is there any way to have a referendum to make it a hanging offense to bring this stuff up again?
No, that, that's the right, just like your right to vote for the chief of police, it's anybody's right to bring up for them to vote. That's part of the reason that J.J. and many more men and women in this room fought so that we have the freedom and the right to do those things. Okay, Joe, come on up.
I'm certainly glad not to have met you with your robe on.
All right, good deal.
I wanna ask if one of the officers who has had the advanced training could detail briefly to us how much of that training has to do with enforcing the law, and how much of that training has to do with dealing with bureaucracy?
Well, we'll see if they know that answer here in a minute. Joe, go ahead.
All right, I'm, uh, Joe Hyde, uh, I got a couple of things I'd like for you to look into, if you can. Um, I don't, you know, I, I can argue both sides. In fact, I was pretty much for the appointed chief up until probably maybe a year and a half ago, and then I started kinda wavering, you know? And one of the things that, that got me thinking is, one of the main reasons why you want an appointed chief is because you have this beautiful talent pool you can pick from, right? So, San Angelo can go out and find the finest police officer, finest police chief anywhere because we don't have to get him elected, he doesn't, he doesn't have to live here, et cetera, et cetera. But then, you start looking at some of the appointed chiefs that we've had trouble with. One is Art Acevedo, the Austin Police Chief, and he went to Houston. I don't know what the circumstances of him leaving Houston were, but in Miami, where his next stop was, he left suddenly, and now he's suing Miami.
Right.
All right, so there's something going on there. The other one that I'm a little more, uh, familiar with is down in Del Rio, they have an appointed chief. Uh, back in two thousand and twelve, they appointed a man named James Von De Brow. And James Von De Brow came to Del Rio, and he was gonna clean it up because it was a mess. And I talked to De Brow personally, I mean, the evidence room, uh, was, was a mess. They, they suspected that officers were selling dope out of the evidence room, et cetera, those kinds of things. Well, they ran him off on a rail, and who'd they replace him with? A local guy inside the police force. So, in that case, in those two cases, I don't know if the appointed chief is the way to go. The second thing that's, that's happened over the last, since COVID really, is we had two monumental events that I, I've kinda think that the, having the political power of an elected police chief has benefited San Angelo, and it might benefit other cities to adopt this same type of, of, uh, deal. One is the BLM riots. How many of those police chiefs were too scared to do anything in Minneapolis or in Seattle when they're actually taking entire city blocks and turning them into different countries? You know, there were problems there that were not addressed by an appointed police chief in a big city. And I think that here, when you watch how our elected chief handled the, the BLM protests, I won't call it a riot, um, which I think verbally were riot, were, were violent, but they weren't physically violent, they handled it quite well. And the reason why they were able to handle it well is because our police chief didn't have to answer to a city manager who's worried about the politics of it, happened to go into, uh, a, a city council. What John Berio says occasionally here, I, I agree, I see glimmers of light in what I see also. You gotta have that political division enabled in, in order to run an efficient police force. Finally, I'll just say this, this talk about qualifications, the voters, I know personally, the voters aren't stupid. So, the voters are not gonna elect an eighteen-year-old kid, uh, that, that's just not gonna happen. I think this qualifications talk is a way to get the camel nose under the tent so that the next time, maybe in three, four years, we can come back and we can get the appointed chief thing passed again. But in reality, my, my, my view now is the elected chief should be copied and benchmarked in other cities, and they can avoid a lot of the problems that are happening today. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. And we did, we did look at that and have that discussion because up north, we, we talked about the fact that police chiefs did not do their job. And, and we understood, we were told that some of the areas up north are looking at the possibility of can they do an elected chief of police? So, that's, that's part of that, both sides of that argument that we have. Okay, any other comments?
Okay, come on up. Jennifer Bearden, it's, I wanted to say this because it kinda goes along with the last two speakers, but I was gonna ask y'all if y'all had talked to other cities with appointed police chiefs that have had problems with the city manager, because that's my concern. If you have a city manager that controls everything, department, city department heads, the city council, and does what he wants, that's a concern, that's an issue if, if you're trying to have your city manager select your police chief. So, that was, and who does the disciplining? If, if you have an appointed police chief, is that the city manager that disciplines?
Well, it depends on exactly how the city council would set this up. But under the civil service provisions, the city manager with, in our case, if we were to make that recommendation, would be with the committee, and then the city council would do that. Uh, Theresa, you wanna address a disciplinary action on the chief of police if they're appointed?
Yeah, appointed chiefs of police are typically just at-will employees, like any other city employee, that can be disciplined by, um, the city manager. The difference there is if we had an officer who worked themselves up through the department and then became the appointed chief, if they were ever removed from the chief position, they do return to their position within the department.
But the city manager removes them?
The city manager generally would remove them, yes.
That's a concern I have.
Would that be with the consent of the council?
I'm looking at that right now.
What, is, my first question, did y'all, did y'all interview the, any of the cities that have problems?
Yes, we talked to several other cities about, and it's, it's just like this. It's, it's just like this, but they all have it, and they all plan on keeping it that way.
Except for the city of North that you're saying they're, they're trying to see if they can do elected.
Well, that was the talk during, we don't, I can't tell you the name of the city, we were just told that, yes. Yes. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
I'm Derek Kirkpatrick, and I think that it's a good idea for, uh, the police chief to have more qualifications. But there again, let's not take this privilege away from the people. Every time you turn around, they're trying to take more privileges away from us and give it to a council or something. Let the people vote, and I also want to know if you get more and more people that want to elect the chief with more qualifications, then if you, if you say to the council, "We, we recommend that you, that we elect the chief," does the council have the privilege of saying, "No, we're going to go ahead and, and have him appointed"?
Yes, ma'am, and we've had that discussion in our committee. We realize that all we're gonna do is make a recommendation. The council could tell us, "Okay, thanks for your recommendation, get out of here, we're gonna do what we want to." You know, uh, they don't have to go by our recommendation. Uh, we're gonna make the recommendation, then it'll be up to them to vote. But, you know, the council is made up of people that they appointed these representatives, and I think they see how hard, uh, because comments and things, I agree with a whole lot of your comments, but I'm trying my best not to let you know which ones I agree with, which ones I disagree with. Because I'm, I can argue both sides. I've heard him argue both sides, and he came in one direction, and now he's arguing both sides. Because Joe's gonna, Joe argued both sides, him and I had a talk the other day when you told me about some of the things back and forth. Everybody in this room can sit here and argue both sides of this a little bit. You know, uh, so I don't know, but yes, ma'am, you are correct. We need to, we always have to keep in our mind the person's right to vote. Is that, you know, is electing the chief of police a right? Well, it is right now, and as long as that's what the people in the city of San Angelo want, that's what they're gonna have. And, uh, because they're gonna be the ones voting. And, and that's what, but our, our recommendation will be to the council. Uh, I, I feel like they will probably look at, take that into very strong consideration, but I can't tell you that they will because that's their option. Uh, but they're gonna be representing you. Okay, any other, I don't even know what time it is, do we have any other questions? Lalan?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a comment. Lalan McClellan, and I've heard a lot of talk about the, the people's voice should be heard, and, you know, we, we need to be heard as, as voters. And I agree, when the city was asked to put an ordinance on the books to make San Angelo a sanctuary city, well, they chose to not and to take that to the voters, to let that voice be heard. Well, that voice was heard, and our voice has been heard about elected police chiefs versus appointed. So, when does it actually not have to keep coming up?
I, I can't give you that answer because just as some people here don't want it to ever come up again, some people over here want it to come up again. There again, it's, that's the rights of the people, that's what we have it for. Johnny, come on up.
My name's Johnny Rodriguez, I'm a retired sergeant from the P.D. I'm still a reserve officer, so I've been affiliated with the San Angelo Police Department for thirty-nine years now. Um, like you said, I can argue both ways. Uh, the people now presently think that, um, they can pick the best, uh, candidate to, uh, through the elected system, and they, and they may be able to do that. I, I don't think they've done a really good job of that, having been in the inside. Um, the other thing is, you're picking the best candidate of who's available, which best candidate and who's available are totally different things. Um, when Chief Voskis was first running, uh, most of us knew that that was gonna be a mistake. We tried to voice our concerns to our friends and ask, ask them to voice those concerns to their friends and pass it on and pass it on, and, um, that fell on deaf ears. Uh, I don't know whether we got the word out hard, fast enough or hard enough, but, uh, it, it did not, it did not work. I have, I can, I can argue for an appointed system with certain qualifications, and I would say that if we did go to an appointed system, first and foremost, that chief would have to have some sort of protection, disciplinary protection, um, such as the officers have under civil service. I was here forty-something years ago, watched a city council meeting going on because we had something coming up, and it was before I became a police officer. And we had a bully for a city manager, and there was an, uh, an item that came up about the fire department, and the police chief, I mean, the fire chief stood up, and the city manager told him, "Sit down and shut up," and the, the fire chief sat down and shut up. We can't have that type of thing for a police chief. So, the police chief has to be able to stand his ground and defend his people. Someone mentioned the good old boy system, we appoint, uh, uh, someone who, um, will just answer to the city manager for fear of losing their job, that's always a possibility. If you afford some sort of qualifications where you have certain rights, disciplines, uh, arbitration, something that protects that chief so that that chief can stand and defend his department. And we go to an appointed chief, you would have much better qualified personnel coming in to be able to run this department. I love this department. I'm in awe of how well this department has done in the thirty-nine years I've been here. But we could have done so much better. But we don't have the people running this department that, that could do those things. We don't have people who've got advanced management skills that are offered all over the world, all over the country. We don't have people who have, uh, command staff, uh, qualifications like you can get in a lot of these big cities. A lot of assistant chiefs and commanders and stuff get sent to all these different schools at these big cities, and I think we, bless, how many people do we have that went to the FBI? Have, that are there that are at the FBI, that have gone through the FBI academy? Five, six? See, we, we have the, the ability to send people to more training, to get them more qualified to take over these leadership positions, and they're not being sent. Why? Because most of the time, the chief of police goes, "I'm not sending that guy because that guy will run against me, and I'll lose my job." In an appointed system with disciplinary protections, that might not happen. And you might get not only a better qualified person to, to, to be a, a new chief, but that chief would not then be afraid to internally qualify other people behind him. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, I looked up the answer to the question, how are they removed? There's really nothing in the statute that says how they're removed. Uh, my experience is, is that, um, most chiefs who are appointed either move on themselves or they retire. If there is a removal that's not based on a civil service violation, which also in my experience, most civil service violations that result in removal have to do with dishonesty, um, then the person goes back to their position. If there is an allegation of some civil service rule violation and the city manager or city council or whomever wants them completely removed from the force, then there is a civil service hearing that would take place, just like any officer, to see if they get to remain on the force, but they would still be removed from their position. But they would still be removed from their position as chief.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody, if you would, please, if you got your, I guess, while you're coming out, you got your proposal, you will mark those terms in so that we'll have those. We have a meeting coming up on the fifth, and I want to be able to give all this information to the committee. Go ahead.
Got just a brief comment. Zane White, District 6. Got just a brief comment and then four sentences. They're absolutely relevant but highly controversial, so I hope you guys will bear with me. Much like John Barrio, I've recently had, the city manager has recently weaponized the San Angelo Police Department against me. A few weeks ago, I was arrested in this building for filing a complaint regarding a code enforcement issue that I've been going back and forth with the city about for nine months. I was arrested. City manager is the one that had SAPD come to escort me out of the building. For the entire 10 years Daniel Valenzuela has been a city manager, he has repeatedly, clearly demonstrated that he lacks the necessary competence and integrity to appoint an appropriate city dog catcher, much less an appropriate city police chief. Daniel Valenzuela has continued to corrupt 17-year City of San Angelo scam, which is granting one of the richest men in West Texas a city code enforcement free pass valued in the neighborhood of half a million dollars or more. Corruption breeds corruption, and unfortunately, a city council which turns a blind eye to blatant corruption is itself corrupt. For the record, I believe option two is the best proposed option regarding this matter before us tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. If y'all would, first off, I want to thank you, and I want to thank you for your opinions because we heard everything that you said. We got this tape, so we'll be able to give this to the committee, so we'll be able to look at it.
I'm sorry. I've been telling you all that. We'll be able to look at what you had to say tonight and look at your information that you come back with us, and we've talked with you about, and we'll give it to the committee, and we'll let the committee know what your thoughts were. If you'll turn these in, that'll help them also because we're trying to look at all the information. Thank y'all so much for coming out tonight and being part of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.